I'd like to call the North Island Elementary Board and Asian Meeting Board. At this time, I'd like to ask Miss Monkrath to give the invitation.
This is not big or bright and it's coming from office for sale and other inspirational tables. When a father came home from work one afternoon, his son wanted to play. His father got pressing work, but the son was insistent. On the coffee table lay a magazine which contained a map of the world. The father ripped the map into numerous pieces, gave the pieces to the son, and instructed him to go put the map back together. The son left the room and the father got to work, making it take a number of hours, but the son took the puzzle together. To his surprise, just fifteen minutes later, the son came back with the project completed. Amazed, the father asked, "How did you finish so quickly?" "It was easy." "On the other side of the map was a picture of a man," said the son. "When I got the man right, the world was right." That's how simple it is to make a better world. Start with yourself and make a better you. Only once we each have solved our own problems will we be able to tackle and solve the problems of the world. We can't take care of humanity until we each know ourselves, Mom.
Thank you, Mom. I would like to let the public know that Dr. Bill Dobbie is going in us tonight remotely. At this time, I would like to ask Miss Deb Forza from Lott Island Elementary School to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
Actually, I'd like to call the fifth graders.
Wade, Nick, Madeline, and Grace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Good evening Chairman Etheridge, Board Members, and Superintendent Stefani. On behalf of myself and the Nott Island Elementary staff, I would like to welcome everyone to Nott Island Elementary School. One of the definitions of technology is the application of scientific knowledge for practical purposes. That is the goal that we want our students and staff to reach. To have our students and staff to use and apply technology as another tool, not as a separate application or class that they get to once or twice a week, but to have it ingrained in their everyday activities. It is not forced into this curriculum, but used as a tool where it will benefit what is happening. We do not abandon traditional methods or resources. While tech integration is strong in the classroom, that has not eliminated the use of the library. This year's circulation statistics show that over 5,000 books have been checked out. In our school, that's an average of sixty-two books per student, with seventeen percent of those being in nonfiction. This shows that students are learning how to blend all resources of knowledge and information. We are not replacing traditional learning resources with tech, but integrating it into it. This is a model of SAMAR. You'll probably start being hearing a lot more about that in education today. This is a model designed to help educators infuse technology into teaching and learning. Digital resources and tools are used for content delivery, collaboration, research, product creation, and sharing. Technology can be used to enhance the student's learning or can be used to transform what they're learning. At Nott Island, we are using it at all levels. For our student showcase, we're going to integrate, we're going to show you how we're integrating technology into our school. I'm going to highlight some of the activities and skills from each grade level and then invite the board to visit the student stations to hear from their own mouths, their explanations, and their perceptions of technology in their classrooms. Okay, for the kindergarten, in education, there's a natural progression to learning. For example, learning to write, you need to learn the correct way to hold the pencil. And when you're using scissors, you need to learn the correct way to cut a piece of paper. In the same way, there's a progression for using technology. As Ally and Noah will show you, students must learn the hand-eye coordination that is needed to use a mouse for the beginning steps of manipulating the keyboard. At this stage, learning username and numbers and passwords is a challenge. Especially if you know you're logging. In first grade, technology allows the user to personalize their learning experience. Megan, Michael, and AJ will show how first grade is now using a program called CSO. This platform can give students more options beyond the traditional essay, poster, or report. It can take a boring lesson to fun or a fun lesson to more memorable. It allows the students who may not like to talk or share a way to show what they're learning. Second grade, students are tech up their weather report by integrating research, Google Classroom, and green screen applications. Students were then filmed on a green screen to create a real weather report. Carly, Delinda, Salem, and Ella will show you how they use Google Classroom daily for lessons and research. Third grade will show you how they extend their science lesson into technology class. Students studied the planets and did research in the regular classroom and created standard posters under planets. Then in technology, they created a digital comic book through an application called Storyboard. Nirvati, Kylie, and Thomas will show you how they were able to beat a poor guy and present facts on the planets of their choice. Fourth grade, we're integrating it with art. YouTube is just not for checking out the latest Minecraft or Fortnite, G. YouTube can be used to show examples on how to create. It brings the artist into the classroom. Couple examples, students watched an artist create paper quilling and then created their own. Students learned about Alexander Calder's wire sculptures and then they combined art with the stem to create their own wire sculptures. Fourth and fifth grade also skyped with the North Carolina Museum of Art for a lesson on interpreting science and weather and art. Luna, Chloe, Lucas, and Andrea will demonstrate how YouTube can be used to acquire hands-on skills. Our fifth graders used Epic Online Books, library books, and NTY's Al to research six main body systems. They chose the systems they thought was most important and then researched it more thoroughly. The end project was their choice. Many chose to integrate involved technology. Wade and Nick chose to use iMovie and create a how-to video and a rap. PE and health, even those classes are involved in technology. Grace and Madeline will show how they researched healthy food choices to create a brochure through Google Classroom and Google Docs. All right, now we're inviting you all to personalize your learning. We have every grade in PE set up back there and we ask that you just, you can wander around and check out how Randy likes with you. I hope you enjoyed the presentations. Like I said, this is just, this is normal everyday things that the students are doing in their classrooms. We did no special prep for it, other than making these boards and getting it together. So, this is the kind of work the students are doing every day. I'd like to thank the parents and the students for coming on out. We appreciate your time this evening. If the kids want to leave now, they can go, it's a school night. I'm sure you all have homework in that. If not, you are more than welcome to stay.
Thank you, Ms. Gorza. If, if you can, would the students like to come up and tell us your name and what grade you're in? Y'all did a fantastic job tonight and we're very proud of you.
My name is Carly Peters. I am in second grade.
My name is Ella LaFolde. I'm in second grade.
My name is Delinda Perry and I'm in second grade.
My name is Salem Wejeli.
My name is Luna and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Chloe and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Lucas and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Wade and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Nick and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Madeline and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Grace and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Kylie and I'm in third grade.
My name is Noah and I'm in kindergarten.
My name is Thomas and I'm in third grade.
My name is Megan and I'm first grade.
My name is Michael and I'm in sec, I mean first grade.
My name is Ally and I'm in kindergarten.
Thank you again. Thank you, Ms. Gorza. At this time, we're going to ask for the approval of the agenda and I would like to make the motion that will exclude Item H, which concerns our capital outlay budget for the 2019-2020 year. We're going to have a private, closed session concerning this and discuss some of these items in detail. So that's why I would like to exclude that from the agenda. But other than that, do I have a motion that we approve the agenda with that exclusion? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we have our public comment session. Ms. Jones, did anyone sign up? We did not have anyone sign up for public comment tonight. At this time, we have our student board member reports. We would like to start with Keela.
Okay, so first up, we have Loyacan Elementary. The spring book fair is currently underway at MES this week with Pete McCaffrey making a royal appearance at drop-off this morning. The MES map 2014 performed well this year with five of its members placing in the top sixteen in accounting. Nott Island joined us for a Nanty Bullying Assembly last week in which Jim Vicennius came to talk for our group of five students about strategies for resisting bullying. Upcoming events this month include the Battle of the Books competition being held at Green's Elementary on April 11th, Make Sure for the Teacher Party on April 18th, and the AG Day on April 18th. I'm in Long Jarvisburg Elementary. JBS is the place to be. We celebrated our title of our reading night with a charlie in the chocolate factory pool tonight. We hosted three hundred-plus folks who came out before the chocolate factory for one night only. JBS also hosted its second annual lunch and learn event where parents were able to spend some of their time in class and learning alongside their child. Afterwards, parents joined their students for lunch. It was a great day event and JBS students also enjoyed the Silver Trout Park tour and the Nanty Bullying Assembly hosted right here in Lott Elementary. We also offered the town to our students at our annual JBS Town Show. We hosted comedians, dancers, young musicians, and performers. It was a great time of it all and as we hear of spring, possibly have some stuff in the world. Then in Central Elementary. Central had a great end to March with our PTF sponsored science fair. Thanks to the students and staff that have heard of our school, JP Nap and Curtham College for judging our projects. JP Nap and Curtham High students have also been centered with our staff at Central by tutoring to our K-312 students during the pre-periods and classes. This program is coordinated through our principal intern, Cam Robinson. Central has decided to participate in our district activities this month with Battle of the Books AG Day in special schools. And then I go with the Chabra Elementary. So, Chabra Elementary had a great read across America and coupled with a successful fairy tale evening. Huge shout-out to Mrs. Harsh in our round 2014 as they swept the final four competition. April's a busy month with SES. April 16th, we will pay our fifth graders to tour Loyacanville School and learn about their transition there. The Moreton Seminary Third Kindness will be held April 17th and AG Day for third grade reading and reading. We hope everyone is safe and fun in spring break. So then I pass it off to the panel.
I'll start. I'll start with Green's Elementary. Our due science night on March 14th was a huge success. April will be busy month. We will be hosting the Battle of the Books competition on April 11th. We will have our Third Kindness Awards simply on April 12th. The Co-Star will be visiting Green on April 15th. With our fifth graders, we'll have a visit from the band and choir. Also, fifth grade wax museum will be from March 11th on April 18th. Our PPI S R Day will be on April 19th. We are looking forward to spring break. Nott Island Elementary, the activities and opportunities are blooming on the island. The Third Kindness Awards Assembly is coming Monday, April 8th. Fourth and fifth grader students will be participating in the Battle of the Books on April 11th. The annual walkathon will be held on Friday, April 12th. Third graders will be participating in AG Day, also known as ACT Day, on April 18th. And we hope everyone has a safe and compliant fill for spring break, April 22nd to 26th. Next up, we're going to go to County Middle School. As we approach spring break, learning at CCMES is full swing. Our students and staff enjoyed the bullying season last week. Spring to the arts was a huge success. We are grateful for the varying opportunities our students have to display their various talents. Speaking of talents, CCMES will be hosting our first graders' Top Talent Show the week after spring break. Audition for current and underway. Mr. Latornis. Excited to meet Mr. Our students will be hosting a wax museum on Wednesday, April 3rd. Stop by and check out these artists. We are excited to have many students and staff participating in the Special Olympics on April 12th at MacIntyre High School. We hope everyone has a restful and relaxing spring break. Alan Adams on the panel.
Okay, I'm going to start with Loyacan Middle School. The CTE department and Katie Barcelada are student students on community field trips for career exploration. In March, students went to COA to learn about health science field. In April, students accompanied by Jamie Purrier and Haley Barcelada will be going to the Raffi Center to attend the Career Exploration Day. Eighth grade students who participated in the virtual jobs shadow assessment will get to attend. Our Science Olympiad team will travel to Raleigh during spring break to compete in state tournament. We wish them a safe travel and success. Catherine Harrison and her students and staff will be attending the Special Olympics on April 12th. Go Bulldogs! Elementary tours will begin this month. This year, we have planned tours to be more interactive. Students will be able to spend some time in sixth grade classrooms and get to know prospective teachers. Nott Island students will come and spend the day on our campus, shadowing our current sixth graders. We look forward to great tours. And for JP Nap. It's official, JP, our first animal club foster cat, was officially adopted on Friday, March 29th. Thanks to JP Nap alumni for providing a safe home for JP. Congratulations to the JP Nap Math 1 team for a first-place finish at the state math competition at Swan University on March 22nd. Freshman Kara Young finished second in the Math 1 division. Both ninth graders Ethan Porter and Kara Young will advance to the state competition in April. Congratulations to the JP Nap FBLA team for an outstanding performance at the state FBLA competition last week. Seniors Madison Hendrick and Cameron Dowdy were awarded scholarships. Nine of our competitors finished in the state top ten for events and two students gave server, gave server in computer games and simulation and Hazel Sanders in organizational leadership finished fourth in state competition. Way to go Spartans! JP Nap students traveled to CCHS on Thursday, April 4th for a mock crash scenario focused on the impact of impaired and distracted driving. This event is sponsored by the Currituck County Sheriff's Department. The ninth grade recruitment process is winding down this week. Acceptance letters and other notifications will be mailed on Friday, April 5th. JP Nap will host its first Student Talent Showcase on Friday, April 5th from 6:00 to 7:30 in the media center. Come on out and join us for an evening of true talent and fun. And finally, Currituck County Act. We continue to look forward to the inauguration of the Ritter's AP Capstone Program this fall and are now one step closer to reaching that goal. Math teacher Brendan Prawls learned Friday that our scholarship application for him to participate in summer training in Baltimore has been approved. Kudos to our Air Force NJROTC, which recently earned a Unit Exceeding Standards Designation at its regional inspection last week. The unit will now be nominated for a distinguished unit of merit and Lieutenant Colonel Keith Drives and Sergeant Insolent Dugaram are also being nominated for outstanding instructor awards. Our dedicated cadets will be hosting a Red Cross Blood Drive on campus next Monday and closed last week with a fourteen-mile walk in memory of those who paraged in the baton denim march. The concert band in Win Ensemble, under the guiding hand of Lee Burges, hosted the first annual Northeast Region NPA, which is Music Performance Assessment, last week and played to superior and excellent ratings. Our annual spring musical, Guys and Dolls, under the direction of Buddy White, is slated for April 12th to 14th in the middle school auditorium. So proud of FBLA member Taylor McCarthy, who was elected as 2019-2020 State President late last month. Her sponsor is business teacher Jim Dorch. English teachers Amy Hardy, Katie Page, and Valerie Person just learned that their proposal to present at the Annual NCTE, which is the National Council of Teachers of English Convention in November, has been accepted. Congratulations to our cheerleaders Leah McLaughlin and Anna Walls, recently gained All-Region. Anna went on to earn All-State honors. Our state championship banner for volleyball recently arrived and is now proudly displayed in the orphan gymnasium. Spring athletics are also underway and playing to stand out reviews. Our hunter-safety team, led by Agriculture Director Daniel Leves, excelled at this weekend's event and is poised for potential regional competition.
Yeah, congratulations on being able to read it off your phone. That's a feat within itself. Superintendent Stefani would like to update us on field trip request.
Thank you, Ms. Estich. Fellow board members. We've got two field trips listed and one that's not listed that I think you'll be excited to hear about. We've got a softball tournament that will take place April 19th and 20th in Greenville and then the Science Olympiad towards the end of the month on April 26th and 27th in Cary, North Carolina. The one that's not on the agenda, that's the special one, actually has to do with our host school right here at Nott Island. They put in a request to go to the Whalehead Club and the Currituck Lighthouse and Wildlife Center in Corolla. So you say, okay. But, it would take over two hours to get there from here and so they have found boat drivers to take them from Nott Island to Corolla by boat. We, of course, superintendents get nervous any time that you travel a different way to field trip so we always check with our attorneys. And so the attorney said that as long as all the safety precautions are in place and there are life jackets being worn by these students, that have a nice trip.
It says twenty minutes that way?
Forty-five, it says on the paper. Yeah, but they said while they're, they're not just going to take the boat over. While they're on the boat, they're going to have an educational trip. They're going to study science ecosystems while they're on the way, estuaries and salt marshes. So they have education on the way over, education while they're over there in Corolla, and then a nice ride back and a memorable field trip for the folks, fifth graders, at Nott Island. So if the board doesn't have any objections, my approval was in pencil and so if you're okay with that, we'll make the approval in ink and they can finish planning their field trip.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the three field trips discussed by Superintendent Stefani this evening. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The 2019-20 school calendar, we do need action on the approval. Do I have a motion that we approve the school calendar? Okay. Do you have a motion? Any motion on the floor? Do I have a second? I second it. Any discussion?
Well, this will be, I guess, the second year when it is likely approved but I just want to state for the record that I'm not in favor of early release Fridays at the high school, every Friday. I don't believe that two halves equal a whole. And I also think under our current budget situation, we're having to spend more of our resources running extra buses to accommodate that or an extra bus run. I personally would prefer to see if we got, I don't know how many days are here totaled up. I didn't total them up, but let's just say there's twenty. I'd rather see ten full days and ten no days than twenty half-days. I personally think that it's less educational value and I think it costs the district more money. So, for that, I'm against the high school calendar. However, I'm in favor of the K-38 and the JP Nap Early College. Anyhow, that's my discussion.
Okay. So, yes, JP Nap, they have the same Fridays half-days. So you're okay with JP Nap, but not the high school?
JP Nap is a odd situation and they get a lot of state funding that the high school doesn't. And they have a lot of off-campus where they're going to JP Nap. They're at COA getting two credits for one class where sometimes they're getting a math credit for the high school and a math credit for college while they're over at the COA.
We have dual enrollment at the high school too.
I'm not really in favor of either, but in that situation, because there's so many kids off the campus already, I'm willing to go along with that. But I just don't believe that it's a good fit for high school.
All right, I'd like to ask, since our student board members are in the schools on a daily basis, can I get your opinion on this discussion?
I understand where Mr. Cock is coming from with the no educational purpose of the half-days, but this also allows our teachers to have more development and also on teacher days, they use that time to help benefit the students and it allows our clubs to get a lot more together and schedule more activities for them, even if they are within the school, not even just field trips. I know personally, my clubs, this Friday alone, are producing an art piece for our school that will then promote recycling among our school and we're able to do that because of our Friday half-days. And I also know at this time, there's a math teacher always available every half-day at the school that can help with any math and you can go there for tutoring. And I also know that this is, uses extra credit time in a few of my classes, which I believe is beneficial because I get a lot of help during that time. is beneficial, because I get a lot of help during that time.
I more or less just agree with her points, although I have not taken advantage of it this time at the end of the day. I know that students do indeed, and that teachers do as well. It serves three primary purposes. It gives students extra tutoring time. It gives teachers extra planning time, and it also serves as kind of just a winding down of the week that allows students to, a little bit extra time to get stuff done that they, to finish their week of school, basically.
If I could just follow up on that, please. I want to make sure you understand I have two points. One is the educational component, which I believe two halves in this situation doesn't equal a whole, right? That's why I'm saying I'd rather have full days and the other half of them no days. The second component is the funding. The bus formula that we have by the state, if we don't adhere to 100%, we pay what amounts to a penalty. It's a bus efficiency formula. We're trying to have that changed currently with House Bill that's been put for under HB97. However, when we're running extra runs or we're not running to capacity, if we take money out of our local dollars to try to reduce ride times, basically increase the quality, if you will, so that some of the kids, for example, when Central aren't having an hour and a half to two-hour bus rides, Central Elementary. In order to invest the local dollars, we still get penalized by the state when we're not performing at 100%. Right now, we're paying upwards of $180,000 as the penalty. By running an extra bus route to accommodate this, rather than not running a bus route on some Fridays, we're paying more money in the penalty. So I want people to understand is there are some possible benefits. I personally don't believe they outweigh the negatives, and that's why I'm against it.
Yeah, I feel like you make some good points, Mr. Krawick. To me, since this is the first year that we have implemented this at the high school, mirroring what is working at JP Knapp, I want to give it a full year, and then I want to look at the academic performance to see if those scores are a direct impact from the after-school tutoring that we provide on Fridays. Some people have the misconception that they get out half a day on Fridays and it's a free-for-all. They get to go home, they get to do whatever they want. That is not the case. This is for learning, for extra help if you need it in a certain area, whether it be math, science, whatever that may be. So I want the public to know it's not just getting out half a day. Those students that want to participate in clubs, it's a great opportunity for them to stay after school and have the transportation provided to get home safe. I know it's hurting us as far as the formula that they use to give us the funds, but to me, I'm trying to look at the bigger picture. If it educates our children and it makes a positive impact, then I'm all for it.
I agree very much with what you said. I don't attend the high school, so I don't really know exactly what goes on during the high school half-days, but I know that at Knapp is something that's really important to me and a lot of other people that go there. I have been tutored on Fridays, I have been the tutorer on Fridays. In fact, I'm going in this Friday to work with the English teacher, Mr. Martin, helping some kids rewrite their essays. And I know that that time is really important to them. It helps us catch up with our work, and it helps us study, and it helps us do all these things, because college is hard. Even if you're taking online classes, it's hard. And being there and being able to have that time away from home, just somewhere that you can put your mind to your schoolwork and you know that you're there for that purpose, it's really, really helpful. And I think that all in all, that it benefits so many people that even if we have a little bit of the consequence with the buses, that it's worth it in the end. And sometimes I just feel like the Fridays are just a break, because I go to COA full-time. I'm there four days a week. I don't go, I don't have school on Fridays at all. I know that I can go to Knapp if I need help, and having that ability has graced me. Sometimes I feel like if I did have school on Fridays, that it would just be too much for me, you know? I feel like having that Friday, even if you do go home and just sleep in, that having that mental health break is also just as important as it is to be there and be tutoring and be learning more.
So you've heard the students' part of it and the benefits to the students, but I want to make sure that everyone understands that we're just not doing this because we think that the students need a break or they need to be able to be in clubs. We're doing it because the teachers need that opportunity and time, not just to plan for themselves, but to collaborate with each other. Ms. Dowdy, can you add anything that, I know we, I hate to put you on the spot like that, but I know we've talked about how some of the math teachers never see each other or hardly ever. Can you kind of just touch on that just a little bit?
Sure. When we started in 2008 at the early college level, it was part of our design to open up a school where we provided time for collaboration among staff as well as time for remediation and tutoring and those types of things. Because about that time, we stopped running buses, for late buses, for tutoring and for clubs and those types of things to take place after school. So as I came up through the early college model with at JP Knapp, we saw lots of success, really about the ability for teachers to collaborate. When you get into a traditional high school model, teachers are kind of in silos. I teach English, I teach math, and there's not a lot of teaming. And in small schools and elementary and middle schools, they're usually teamed together. When you get to a high school, that doesn't happen. So when I switched over to the comprehensive high school, that's one of the things, as we talked about, would it be something that would help us academically? It's really about providing time. When teachers have time to do those types of things, we see the benefits for students. And then when we can provide students with extra academic or enrichment opportunities, we see that benefit as well. So again, the high school has some of its high scores in the past several years at the end of the end of course results. I think it's starting to pay dividends. I think if you survey staff, and of course, students, but you have to understand, every student's going to say they want half a day off. So, you know, if you survey staff, I think you're finding that they're finding a lot of worth in the ability to collaborate, to get professional development as a staff, to be able to network vertically so that they know what middle schoolers are coming out with, so that they're ready as high schoolers and what they can do as high school teachers to help that transition. There's a lot that's going on that I think is a benefit. Yes, it comes at a price. And I think when we try to do what's best for kids, sometimes it always doesn't fit in the red tape boxed-in rules that exist.
That's exactly right, and I understand your concern, but I also know that our job is to take care of the money, but the ultimate is that we want education for the kids that's going to be the best that we can give them.
I just want to touch on a few of the benefits that I've seen, and, you know, just as Knapp has a lot of students going to COA, our traditional high school now has that as well. So we have a lot of students going to COA on a daily basis. I think it is very valuable for the teachers to have adequate planning time. They have talked about how they can just do so much more for their students. Today, I dropped in to see, I'm not sure what her title is, I call her the liaison between our students and setting up work experiences, and she shared some photos and some journals with me of two students. One is working with fire and EMT, and he gets all of this experience on Friday afternoons, and was just, just the reports she's getting from the people he works with are amazing. And now, because of this experience, he thinks he wants to go into that when he leaves school. So it's a great chance for the students to experiment with what they want to be when they get out of school. There was another one that had an experience working with diesel mechanics, and he just didn't want to leave. They said they had to make him leave. He wanted to stay there all the time. So she shared a couple of good things. She's got 49 students, I believe she said, signed up for the next go-round that she'll be working with to participate in this. And I, too, am concerned about the bottom-line dollar, but as Ms. Kraft said, I think, you know, we have to look at what's going to provide our students with a good experience, too. Sending.
Although I understand the financial boundary, of course, I'd also like to say that I am enrolled in three AP classes, which allow me my college credit and my high school credit right now. And with this time, I know each one of my AP teachers is very open to always helping me, and when I go in there, I see the COA students also in there getting help from our teachers at our school when they're struggling in classes during this time. And not only is this a time for the AP classes to go and get that extra push, but my AP teacher not only assists my AP class during that time, but she uses this as a time to teach us strategies on how to do better on our ACT and SAT before the test date approaches so that we can succeed after high school. And I also am in the running for the internships next year, and I know that this would be a great time for me to build up that time.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, it's not all about the money. Two halves don't equal a whole. We can accomplish the same thing by taking a full day off and a full day on. It's savings to the district. I'm not in favor of that, but we could. I believe you go to school for a full day, get more accomplished than going two half-days. So it's not all about the money. It's twofold. We're spending more and we're getting less. That's what I believe.
Thank you. We have a first and we have a second with no further discussion. We'll take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? As have it, motion carries. Mr. Stefanik, would you like to give us an update on our school's capacity?
Thank you, Ms. Sethic. On the, or in your packets, you will see an updated school capacity report. The changes on the report, I went back and did not count art and music rooms as potential classrooms if class sizes, you know, got to be too large, and so we left those rooms standing in the schools as specials classes, and the capacities listed were the result of that revision. If the board is comfortable with these capacities as they stand, I can move and share them with the planning department, and so then we can all have the same numbers to work from as we make decisions as some of our schools approach and/or with this listing. One elementary school actually above the, I'll call it the minimum capacity. Again, we were doing the tours just for the board's information. These capacities are based on a low number for the K-3 capacities. You have a three-student flex that's permitted in the K-3 classes, and so the numbers you see are the low numbers with 16:1, 17:1, or 18:1 in all the K-3 classes.
All concerned with the consent agenda, do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second? All in favor? Consent agenda is approved. We have a scheduled work session, May 2nd at Knapp Professional Learning Center at 4:00 PM. Then we will have our monthly Board of Education meeting, May 2nd, at the historic Currituck County Courthouse at 6:30 that evening. At this time, I'd like to ask for board member comments and superintendent comments, and if we can start with Mr. Krawick.
Well, good evening. Let's see. This past month, I had visited Knott's Island Elementary School on a couple occasions, and then this past weekend as well to attend at Bazaar, which seemed to be going very well. I toured Moyok Elementary School, and I'd also like to touch base with this House Bill 96 that is referring to, recognizing, what they're trying to do is change some of the wording in the law to make Knott's Island recognized as an isolated school, which I believe it is. And hopefully, House Bill 96 will be approved, because what it will do is it will bring more resources to this school. Fortunately, we have eradicated combination classes here and around the county. However, it will prevent future wars if there were ever to tie a financial shortfall from combining classes at the school again. It will also possibly bring resources here for other programs that some of the elementary schools have, maybe like music or other things. So I can't think of all of them right in the moment, but it'll be a really good thing for not only this school, but the district, and it will free up some of the monies that we're having to spend out of local to provide the extra teacher here and other services that are being provided. The state will carry that, and it'll free up money for other schools where some of your children will eventually attend one of the two elementary, um, middle schools or the high school, JP Knapp. So those resources will be able to be reallocated. There's another House Bill, it's House Bill 97, and it goes into kind of what I was talking about earlier, where we have a transportation situation where one county out of, out of the whole 111 school districts, we're one that faces three challenges. We're very unique. We're not, we don't, we're the only one that faces all three of these. We're going narrow county, making up over 50-plus miles. But on the south end of the county, we have to retrieve membership through another county. And on the north end of the county, we have to retrieve membership through another state. So we're the only school system that faces that and hopes that we will get House Bill 96 passed, which will change the, well, we'll have an exemption as Currituck County schools so that when we're not riding our buses at full capacity 100%, based on our model, we won't be penalized, because right now, we're paying $200,000 back. If we paid out of local funds every 500, we'd be penalized approximately another 200. So it costs us 700 to get 500 out of pocket would cost us, just the way the formula works. We got penalized when we raised the salaries of bus drivers, believe me. So hopefully, 96, HP 96, isolated schools, and HP 97, school funded formula will be amended for Currituck County schools. And lastly, I'd like to say, I am honored to have been part of eradicating combination classes in Knott's Island. I know I've been talking about them for a long time, and we have 14 of them in elementary schools, and just as of January, we had the last instructor here at Knott's Island, thanks to the help of my fellow board members and the administration, and I'm very thankful that we accomplished that. And with that, I hope everybody has a happy Easter, and God bless Currituck County.
Mr. Stefanik?
Good evening. Just have a couple of comments to the Board of Education. Thank you with your consent agenda vote. I hope that is the last step you have to take in providing us with our brand-new activity buses. The contract was in there, and hopefully simultaneously, the county commissioners are also approving the same contract. We've got the buses sitting and waiting at the bus company for these contractual agreements to be finalized, and according to our representative, the new activity buses should be here by the end of the week so we can utilize them with some of our longer trips that are probably upcoming with our spring sports. And so much needed, and thank you to the board for approving that contract. Also, as you've heard several times up here tonight, there's been comments about the budget. The Currituck schools for the past, at least six or seven years, has been operating their annual budget by using part of their fund balance. We're at a point right now where the fund balance does not have enough money in it to match the fund balance that we're using in this current year. So we cannot repeat the draw off the fund balance next year with the expenditures we're using this year. So we have to look at any ways that we can possibly save some money. So, we have to look at any ways that we can possibly save some money. We're also working with the commissioners to try to see if our allocation from the county can be a little bit higher to help offset those fund balance dollars. And to that end, we're gathering input from as many places as we can. I'm going to pull together our teacher representative committee that we have for the district. From Notts Island, Ms. Fentress is that representative, and we'll pull that teacher group together to get some ideas about what we might be able to do with our budget process as we move forward. Thank you. Thank you for hosting us this evening. We appreciate Notts Island being fantastic hosts and we really appreciated all the student presentations. They were very worthwhile and educational to us. So, thank you.
So, yes, I echo Mr. Stefanik. Thank you for hosting us. I come over here almost every month, so I always enjoy visiting over here and so we really appreciate the great crowd we have. I attended the MAP twenty-four competition with all six elementary schools earlier this, last month. And as Kealan mentioned, Chawbar Elementary School swept the contest. I taught with Mrs. Harsh, their coach. So, I say congratulations to the students and Mrs. Harsh for their great present, their great contest. They did a wonderful job. I attended the anti-bullying workshop for parent information at Currituck County High School last week and then also the Moyoc Middle School presentation for students. It was amazing that Jim did a great job. It was really, it was really informational. I visited JP NAP this morning. I attended the Spring into the Arts Festival at Currituck County Middle School, weekend before last, I believe. The art was amazing and there was Currituck County High School Band, the chorus, and Moyoc Middle School Band that I did get to hear. And then we also, as a board, toured Moyoc Middle School and Moyoc Elementary School. So, have a happy Easter.
The break is coming.
Hold on.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say what a great job those students did tonight and I'd also like to say for me, it's like coming back home because I am a native of Notts Island and I went to this school, grades one through seven, and still have family here. So, I thank Notts Island for hosting this meeting. I have really enjoyed it. This past month, I've had the opportunity to travel to Raleigh with Superintendent Stefanik and we met with Representative Steinberg. We have he and Bobby Hannig representing us well in Raleigh and, and as Mr. Kradic said, working hard on a couple of bills that will directly benefit Notts Island and our schools as a whole. Reach out to them with concerns, Bobby Hannig and Bob Steinberg. We are also fortunate to have Ed Goodwin, who is from Choate. He doesn't directly represent us, but he's close by and I think the three of them are working really hard for Northeast North Carolina. I'd like to give a shout-out to Moyoc Elementary School and Chawbar Elementary School. Their recent fundraisers, I think they raised like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars and shout-out to their parents. They did like a jog-a-thon or something and amazing, the amount of money that they raised. I also had the opportunity to attend the Bully Proofing Youth Program, Jim Basinius. I went to the one for parents and I also went to one at Moyoc Middle School. Usually, we talk to the bully and we talk about, oh, it's not nice to do that, blah, blah, blah. But he had a different approach and I know your students saw him and it was how to handle the bully and how to make them not be a bully. So, I'm hoping that will be a benefit to our students. I'd like to give a shout-out to our hunter safety team. They did compete in Columbia this weekend in the district tournament. They got third overall, but the part that I liked the most was they got the sportsmanship award and when the gentleman was giving out awards, he even commented that they were probably going to have to name that the Currituck Sportsmanship Award because we have received it three out of the last four years. And I do hope that you all have a wonderful Easter. Call us if you need us.
Ms. Rose, a couple of things. I was able to attend the Bully Proofing held at Griggs Elementary for our youth and that was very informative and I hope the children learned a lot. We have the upcoming Amore Conference that will be held this Saturday, the sixth of April, and that's going to be held at the JP NAP High School, early college, rather. And my daughter, Diane Davenport, heads this up and she does this because of her love for the, for the kids. And it's not only for our students, our high school girls at NAP, it's for the high school girls at Currituck County High School as well. And this year, it's titled, "This Is Me." And they said, "I am brave, I am bruised, I am who I'm meant to be and this is me." And they have so many activities and I always attend this event just because I love it and I love to see the girls have such a good time. When they register, when they come in the door, they have to put their cellphones in a basket. And for, for girls of this age, that's hard for me to do. I can't imagine, you know, a high school student, it's unplugged. So, they cannot play on their phones, they can't text their friends, they, they, they're, for a few hours, they're having a good time. And she tries to pair them up with other girls that they don't know that well, maybe to form some new friendships. But they have meditation, sewing, zumba, yoga, self-defense, and they have a painting class and they also have a guest speaker that night, Genevieve Dozier. So, I'm looking forward to that. We also have our Currituck FFA Annual Plant Sale coming up on April tenth and I urge everyone to support the FFA and to buy some plants. I know everybody's kind of got that spring fever, especially since Saturday, and then it goes from seventy-five to forty-five, but that's Currituck County for you. So, please support everything that we have going on at all of the schools. I hope each and every one of you have a wonderful Easter and Ms. Rose, and thank you so much for showing us around today at your beautiful school. We really appreciate everything that you did for us this afternoon. Thank you. Do I have a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.